Day. We thank you for this beautiful day in Montgomery. We thank you for this group that's joined us today, that comes because they're concerned about the things that happen in Montgomery. They want to be involved. Thank you for this county commission. Help us be good stewards of this money that we receive from the citizens of Montgomery County. And help us, Lord, to do decisions that's going to be in the best interest of everybody in Montgomery County. Continue to lift up Chairman Dean and our prayers as he continues to improve. And look forward to the day that he'll be back here with us. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll call role now. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Chairman Dean is absent. Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Here.
Vice Chairman Singleton.
Here. Comments from citizens, I don't have the list, but I think the only ones on there right now, is that list back there? I think Smokey, I know you're first. So you'll come up and introduce your guest with you. If you would, state your name and your guest names and your organization.
Good morning, County Commission. Give me great pleasure to be before you. I got my team with me. I got Andre Bruce. I got Eugene Johnson. Both of these guys is Thomas. Both of these guys is native of Montgomery. Like before you two weeks ago. Asking for your help. You asked me to give you a budget. It's I presented that before you. You can take a look at it. Also have my budget guy here. So if you have any questions that my budget guy can answer.
On the how do the kids, they register and they pay a fee to attend the camp? And what is the fee for the kids to attend? Is there a fee or is it open to?
Well, it is. We don't want to say it's a free camp, but we were charging. We tried to make it free because if we get y'all to say if y'all did y'all 25,000, that's 150, 125 kids that we know can come free. But they'll go ahead and sign up just like they paying. But we'll have a name to say we got 25 kids from this county. Twenty, 25 kids from this area.
So you're, I'm looking at your budget. Thank you for providing this. You have actuals and new. So is the 78,000 the cost to put on the event? Or is it 78 plus 48?
No, it's the 78. I went back. The original budget that was presented to you guys. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. My name is Eugene Thomas. I'm originally from here in Montgomery. But yes, the, the original budget that was provided to you guys, that's the actuals. And then the new is the modified budget. We went back and we understood that there was a concern about various costings. So we went back and tried to strip anything out and everything out that we possibly could to try to make it a little bit more reasonable for you guys in terms of a turnover. So it be the 48,000 is actually what we're looking at.
Gotcha.
To put on the camp.
How much of the 48,000 have you raised?
Of the 40, 2,000, at this point, we've raised 2,500.
Okay.
2,000 was donated by the mayor, see Montgomery.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And this event is June 10th and 11th?
June 10th through the 12th.
10th through 12th?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it still going to be?
It's 200, 200 dollars per kid.
Well, the, the cost that we averaged out to cover everything would be 200, but with the 25,000 donation by your contribution by the city county commissioner, that would be 125 kids.
125 kids.
That would be participating for free.
And we're just.
And that, that means their cost is covered.
What's your capacity in terms of the number of kids?
Our cap is 500.
Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll do 10 kids. I, 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 I won't master mayor, but I'll do 2,000 dollars. From my designated.
If, if you can't get what you're looking for today in terms of the, the total dollar amount, is that going to impact?
We, we will make every effort to, to make this opportunity for the kids available. So we're going to keep pressing forward. We would love for you guys to, to help us out in this regard because we think it's very important that these kids, and I heard one of the commissioners speak earlier today talking about the opportunity to keep kids out of trouble and giving them mentors and giving them opportunities to get their voices out there and get in contact. What we're bringing is former athletes, professional athletes who are not actually professionals. Who are out in the working world, who actually contributed to society and who can now give these kids some feedback. And I, and I'll just share a little bit of my story with you guys. And I know this is kind of going off script here a little bit. But I'm, again, I'm from here in Montgomery, Alabama. I went to Carver High School. I'm born and raised on the west side of Montgomery. Daisy Lawrence Elementary, McIntyre Junior High School. One of the strongest voices in my head was Johnny Davis. I don't know if you remember this guy. Played football for Alabama. Grew up in my neighborhood over by Hope Street. Meant a lot to me, great deal to me, you know, great voice in my head as I came up. And in addition to the fact, I went to the military and became a veteran when I got out. One of the other voices that were very important to me was Coach Dan Lewis, who was my former high school coach. And also I had friends like Andre, you know, who gave me a little bit more encouragement. Hey, you can go back to school. I went back to school, played basketball, of course. Not of course, but went back to school, played basketball and got an opportunity to get an education and then turn that education into a future. So these kids need to hear somebody like a coach, you know. More importantly, somebody who's been there and done what they've done and then made it to the ultimate level, to the pinnacle. NFL, we bring in professional people who are working currently, who've also played in professional ranks. Some of these kids and their parents know these names and faces will have a different ear or a different voice to their ears. Now, we're not just giving a football camp just for football. We also have educational components to it. NIA which is something very new to these kids that's coming out. It's a new thing for them. So we're giving them exposure to that, financial literacy, which is one of our founding principles. You know, we have a lot of things we're trying to incorporate in this to make it a full fledged, for, a full impact opportunity for the kids. So yeah, we're charging a little bit of money for it in terms of trying to make it for them, but we're not asking for a penny. Neither one of us is making a penny on this. So everything that we asking you guys for is to help the kids. It goes towards all the equipment, bring the professional athletes here and making those opportunities available for them.
Let me make, let me, let me make a suggestion. You know, y'all, this is your first year and you're starting and you're trying to get going and it's always hard to get started.
Absolutely.
On some of your equipment and stuff, ideally you would be able to get this and keep it and use it year to year to year. But when you're getting started, something very small, getting start. I would check with the high schools to see if they will let y'all use some of this stuff and then buy it as you can with your budget. That would be my suggestion. Y'all's value in this is that your role models, you're coming back for these kids to have role models. That's the value of the camp.
Absolutely.
You don't have to have it. Ideally, you'd love to have the finest equipment out there. The ladders, the run through, stopwatch, stuff like that, balls to have your own. Ideally, you would love to do that. And over time, you probably will. But starting out, it's kind of hard for us as a commission to fund that kind of stuff starting out. But you know.
The parking and recreation say they'll donate some balls.
Yeah, stuff like that.
You know, I mean, we are reaching out to the parking and recreation. They, they say they'll get some cones, some balls and stuff. Anything y'all can do can help. You know, I mean, right now, we're on a shoestring budget and trying to do something for the, for the city of Montgomery. It's not going to benefit me. I'm not looking for no fame. I, I had my fame. It's about saving our kids. And I want to bring, I don't, I went to Auburn, so I don't do stuff half, half ass. Excuse my language. You know, I mean, I like to present my kids with the opportunity to stuff that they'll see in the combine one day. If they happen to make it.
Hey, I agree. We need, the biggest thing I think we need in Montgomery, Alabama right now is males in these young people's lives. And, and I commend y'all for doing this, for coming back and doing this. And again, this is something I hope y'all continue to do every year.
It's going to be every year. We also going to do at
Boot camps.
Boot camp. We're going to do a boot camp.
What's your name?
My name is Ernest Smokey Hodge.
Ernest?
Smokey Hodge.
Ernest Hodge?
Yes, sir.
You went to Auburn?
Yes, sir. We both.
And what's, you're Andre.
Andre. They're all Carver guys. Well, two are Carver guys.
Two Carver guys. I'm from Birmingham. I'm from Birmingham.
You used to Birmingham.
But I've been living here 20 years, so I'm a local now.
What's the other guy's name?
Eugene Thomas.
Eugene Thomas.
Yes.
I'm a Carver guy.
Oh, are you real? Okay.
And you really preaching to the pride. I understand what you're doing.
Yes.
And I'm supporting you, you know. Just because you don't get what you ask for.
Right.
Very few people get what they ask for.
Right.
When they come here. But you, you, you're getting support from, from here. And, and I'm, I'm with Doug and what he's saying and what you're trying to do and what you're trying to start out. A lot of people, most of the programs that we were asked to, to support are not startups. They're programs that have already gotten off the ground, have a little bit of a track record. And they, they're doing stuff in the community and we see an opportunity to help them do more.
Right.
Or to help them continue to do what they're doing.
You know, I might, this might be our first one here in Montgomery. I've been doing youth camps in La Grange, Georgia for 17 years.
Yeah, but see that, that.
But I'm, I'm just letting you know, this is not, this is not my first rodeo, but I've been doing camps.
And I'm not saying that.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to get, give you an understanding of how this happens.
Okay.
You know, it just, you don't just come down and get funded.
Right, right.
You know.
I understand that. It's whatever y'all can do. You don't, you know, we're going to keep, we're going to keep, keep it moving, you know.
That's what happens. You make your pitch.
Right.
And then we do what we're going to do. And you move on.
Well, I thank you. I thank you for anything you do.
Florence, I would, I would do 2,000 from my donated revenue. And I'll be at the camp.
I want you there.
I'm going to come out. Yeah, I promise. I will be there.
And I want you, I'm going to show you the ladders.
And I tell you.
He will be there. He will be there.
I'll be there. And the reason I.
He will take a picture.
The reason I want to be there. Yeah, we'll take a picture, no doubt. The reason I want to be there is because next year when you come back, I want to say, hey, I went to this camp.
Yes.
I saw the kids at the camp. I saw the kids that came from situations where they need not only training in football, the football parts and minor things.
My mind.
I mean, this is training with real men in that environment and they see success and they see successful African-American men that are willing to come back and help. So get this thing started. It may not be as big as, as we would like to see it the first year. But let's get it started.
Okay, we'll do.
And, and I'm, I'm willing to help and if any other commissioners want to help, that's fine.
Thank you.
We'll get it started and, and I can help you promote it to try to get some of these kids that can pay.
Right.
And need to pay.
Right.
I'll be glad because that, they, you know, they getting.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, they getting.
We be all hands on deck.
Exactly. And we need that. We need the whole county.
Right.
I, I want to go ahead and say that I understand how important it is to support initiatives before, you know, you really get an opportunity to prove yourself. I know when I was growing up and so forth, it was, you know, always a challenge to get people to believe in you. And so once you become successful, you know, sometimes you don't need those people. I know when I was first trying to start my business, I couldn't get any help anywhere. And by God's grace, when we became successful, everybody wanted to help. They wouldn't even give me a postage meter. I couldn't even get a postage meter. You know, I want to try to look professional, you know, and have my postage go out, you know, in a professional manner. And when we were eight, when we made it, then I had Pitt and the Bows come to me and trying to, you know, give me a postage meter, but it was too late then because I didn't need that. You know, by God's grace, I had already made it. And so I want to go ahead and give 5,000 dollars believing you are going to do what you say you're going to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You can take that from my designated forms, please.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all guys.
Thank you.
Florence, that has to go to the, Smokey, the name of the group is? It's a 501(c)(3).
It's a 501(c)(3). We, we do have the, since the last time we met, we have received. We have received our letter of determination. So yes, the name of it is SAFE. S-A-F-E.
See that, Teresa, raise your hand. See Teresa for you.
Okay, we, we, I talked with the.
That's a definitely, definite positive move.
Yes, thank you.
We look forward to seeing you guys next year.
Yes, sir.
I think that is all, nobody else signed up to speak today. So Florence, I think that's it.
Next, we'll have a public hearing regarding an alcohol license application for a Latino festival. No.
Yes. Yeah, declare the public hearing open. Anybody here to speak on this matter? Clear the public hearing closed.
Consider the minutes of the regular meeting of April 5th, 2022. So moved.
I second.
Any objection? So ordered. You working on it? Oh, you're done? Okay. Okay, thanks Florence.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Need a second?
Well, we don't, we don't have anything.
I don't have it. That's the votes out.
Tammy's still on to approve the first one, the minutes. Okay.
Okay, second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an alcohol license application for a Latino festival on April 30th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Slow.
Consider a resolution granting an application to amend the certificate of incorporation of the Montgomery County Communitive Cooperative District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Why, why am I voting twice every time?
Consider a resolution approving the 2022 back to school sales tax holiday. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a proposed amended resolution for the Montgomery County Taxpayers Bill of Rights. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider 2021 SCAP grant for the sheriff's office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider downtown alliance 2022 monitoring imposed remedial action report scope of work agreement. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider amendment one and two to an agreement with ingenuity for the probate judge's office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an agreement with Bradley Plumbing and Heating for a building chiller and cooling tower replacement at the Montgomery County Courthouse Annex I. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies as presented with the addition of a thousand dollar appropriation from Commissioner Harris to NAMI.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Did, did my NAMI not come out of agency? I did something out of agency. I did 500. Ma'am?
Yeah, I said, I have, I think I still have a few bucks left in agency, so I wanted to do it out of that one.
All right. And so that's 500 for NAMI out of agency.
Correct.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of a 500 dollar appropriation from Commissioner Walker to Morningview Elementary for the principal's discretionary fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Okay.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with an addition of a 5,000 dollar appropriation from Commissioner Sankey to Adessa's Blessing for Operations, 1,000 dollars from Commissioner Singleton from NAMI and 2,000 from Commissioner Harris, 5,000 from Commissioner Sankey and 2,000 from Vice Chairman Singleton for SAFE for the football camp.
Florence, is it too late to add one to that now? Is it too late?
Go ahead.
On behalf of Chairman Dean, I think he'd be okay with 2,000 for the football camp. And if he's not, I'll cover it later with him.
I'll help you cover it.
But I feel confident he'd be okay with that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number nine for the engineering department. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number three for personnel. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number three for the youth facility detention.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the district attorney's office for an assistant records coordinator and a records coordinator.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the engineering department for a county road equipment operator two. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal in the sheriff's office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
We have a waived rule item to consider raising the summer student worker wage from $9 to $10 per hour.
No objections. I approve, uh, move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Is that it, Florence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Attorney. Mr. Deputy Administrator.
Yes, sir. Just an update on ERA two. We have approved 4.9 million dollars and that equals out to 815 households.
The application process is open.
So, well, once we get the additional 8 million dollars, which we approved the last, I mean, that's going to take a little bit in the pipeline. I can get you those estimate dates as to when we'll be able to do that. There, we will be able to open up applications sometime after we get that 8 million dollars. Yes, sir. So we have not received that yet, but once we do, we'll be able to give you an updated timeline on when we'll be able to get new applications open.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Harris.
No, sir.
Commissioner Walker?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Sankey?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Everybody good today?
Good day.
Already had my say.
There is a ASU dedication of the Joanne Robinson Hall at 11 a.m. this morning on the ASU campus, if anybody's interested in that. And Sheriff Cunningham still in the room? Sheriff, you give us a quick update on the deputy that was hospitalized on Saturday. Just, I meant to do that early, if you don't, just real quick. Just, I meant to do that early, if you don't, just real quick.
Doug, you know which building they're gonna desert?
It's called the Joanne Robinson Hall.
Which, you know, which one?
It's on Tullabody, Tulaby?
Oh, Tulaby. Oh, Tulabody Hall.
Mm. It's on that sheet, the, the first one on the top.
Okay.
Uh, the deputy's doing fine, he's at home. Um, I know, we had the Easter egg hunt that Saturday. He was out at, uh, Tellus Drive, stopped the car, uh, while he was checking the guys in the car, he found a lot of drugs on them, and he patted the guy down, and, and by the time, he started pulling out the marijuana, the pills, and he had meth, and, uh, they had a little fit in them, and, uh, but it was laced on some of the drugs, and, uh, when he took all the stuff out of his car and he was placing it on the hood, he told the other deputy, I don't feel good. Next thing you know, he hit the ground. And they had to give him four hits of Narcan, four containers of Narcan. Uh, he was, uh, pretty much dead, and it took four things of Narcan to get him back and, uh, took him to the hospital. I think by that time, you had went out to the hospital too, so, uh, but, uh, thank God, he was released from the hospital that day and was able to go home.
This was from touching, coming in contact.
Just coming in contact with, uh, fit now. And that's something that we're starting to see more. We had a couple of deputies that got exposed in Jefferson County, uh, several police officers in Jefferson County, so we're starting to see this now more. Uh, I mean, this is, this is the new thing that you're gonna start seeing, and if it's that deadly, uh, can you imagine if you're sitting in a department store with somebody or anything, and, and it get airborne? Once it get airborne, it's deadly. I mean, it can kill you. So, uh, uh, we're just thanking God that, that other deputy was on the scene with them and knew to get the Narcan out. Right now, we, we give every deputy, every car has Narcan, because we've already revived several people from going out on calls, overdose calls, and now you having to use it on your own, uh, that's something totally different. So, but this is something that we started preparing for a couple of years, years back, and we're starting to see more of it.
You know, that preparation probably saved that officer's life.
Oh, yeah.
Because the deputy, the backup deputy, he did not know.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'd have been there and the deputy said, I don't feel good, I, I, I wouldn't have known.
Yeah.
I would have had no clue.
Yeah, and that's one of the signs, once they, uh, they, they pass out, they'll tell you they don't feel good, I feel woozy, and you know they've been exposed. And like I said, we've been doing Narcan for the past three, four years. We've been issuing it and putting it in the cars, uh, so that we can have it. And I just, I'm glad we were, we've been recipients of that. Uh, I think, you know, you wrote a grant win about two years ago? Yeah, when we first got our first group of Narcan, so, uh, but it, it, it pays off, and I told all the other smaller counties, they need to get prepared. But right now, uh, Department of Public Health and Mental Health, State Department of Mental Health is donating Narcan to law enforcement for free, so, uh, we just took advantage of it.
This was a, uh, officer that came to us from Prattville, had only been with us less than a month.
Just a month, just got here.
Just got here.
Yeah, so, but I do appreciate y'all thanking, and like I said, just keep them in, in your prayers. Thank y'all.
It also makes us all aware of the dangers that our law enforcement people encounter every day, and it don't have to be a gun that shoots them, it could be something like this that you have really no idea, so. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
May I move adjournment, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Make sure you log out.